Mr. Stembridge.
Recording in progress.
President, Madam Chair, but I'll have an issue with the video, but bear with me.
That's okay. Today's a technology day problem for everyone.
Well, you know.
Mr. Valencia.
Present.
Mr. Langham.
Present.
Ms. Weewell.
Present.
Ms. Betabrazza.
Present.
Okay, the floor is yours, Mr. Stembridge. And in the meantime, I'll just remind folks that we are a six-member board.
And with that, to begin the hearing schedule for 1:00 P.M., first, we have two companion cases. Case BOA 1578504 with the address of 217 Parrish Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1578505, also with the address of 217 Parrish Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Attorney Matt Ekel with Fletcher Tilton with a business address of 100 Franklin Street. With me today is Eric Zacherson from Context, the project architect. We're seeking to erect a roof deck at 217 Parrish Street for the exclusive use of Unit 5. You can see the outline of the roof deck there on the top of the page, the square kind of somewhat in the middle of the structure, but creeping towards the front to the right there. Unit 5 encompasses the top floor of the existing residential building. As mentioned, this would be exclusive to Unit 5 and would be accessed from within the existing unit by an internal stairs and a hatch. The deck itself is approximately 16 feet by 16 feet and has specifically been designed to be set back from the front of the building to limit any impacts on a Butters or the streetscape. The project originally was cited for roof structure restriction, height violation, and an extension of a non-conforming use based on the five units that already existed at the property. That was part of our original filing, however, based on the adoption of Plan East Boston, the proposal now is largely aligned with the goals of the new zoning and planning for this area. We're also seeking relief for the cited building code violation, as read into the record by Mr. Secretary, which was cited due to the fact that the roof access isn't proposed through a headhouse, it is through a hatch. As is typical with roof decks, that the board sees we're proposing the access via hatch so as not to alter the profile of the building and limit any impacts on the neighborhood. We did hold them in a Butters meeting and met with the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association and submitted over 20 letters of support, including one from the Neighborhood Association. With that, I'll pause and happily take any questions from the board.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing done. May I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Melvia Gomez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted in a Butters meeting on April 9, 2024. One of Butters was present on the call. The applicant met with the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association in April of 2024, and a vote was taken. The group voted to support the project with the understanding that a roof deck would be built for the fourth condo. ONS did receive 25 letters in support of the project that were forwarded to the board. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Parra from Councilor Paleras's office. The council would like to go and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
With that, may I have a motion?
That's your hearing.
Hey, I heard someone say motion to approve. Who was that?
That was me, Madam Chair.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Betabrazza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
And for the remaining cases left, I will ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or referrals. And also remind folks that we do have a six-member board. And with that, we'll move forward to case BOA 1584736 with the address of 713 Funtz Road. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, have a business address of 51 Dobson Road. We're here today seeking relief to demo the existing structure and erect nine townhouse-style residential units. The zoning sub-district here is a 2F6000, and our lot size is approximately 15,500 square feet. So we have a very big lot. The violations are as follows. The usage of forbidden use, as it is a 2F6000 zone, and we are proposing nine residential units. The FAR, the required FAR is 0.8. We are proposing 1.2. Building height requirement is two and a half stories at 35 feet. We are proposing three stories but are below the height requirement with regard to the footage as we are at 32 feet in height. Front yard setback requirement is 15, we are at 13. Side yard setback requirement is 10. We have 21, you can leave it there, Ambassador, and I'll get to that in a second. Side yards setback requirement is 10. We're at 21 feet on the right side, and we are in violation on the left side, which is 5 feet. And the rear yard requirement is 30 feet, and we are proposing 11. So what we have here shown is the site plan, which shows five three-bedroom units with two and a half baths at 2,300 square feet and three four-bedroom units at two and a half baths and 2,300 square feet as well. We do, we are proposing one indoor garage parking space for each of the units, and these are homeownership units that will go out into the community. The owner of the property, the existing property, is developing this for the family. She wants to leave something for her children, which is a great thing to do. And we'll entertain any questions that folks may have at this time.
Okay, questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have maybe a question, sorry, can't see. But, you know, the BPDA recommendation is interesting in that it seems to focus on EDU policy rather, not rather than, but in addition to what is before us. And I was wondering if Mr. Hampton, if he's still with us, could elaborate on that and whether that feedback made it to applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Weewell. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, BPDA. Yeah, we're on the record here for approval. My apologies, denial without prejudice. We would prefer to see the ADUs be used in this instance where we don't have to demolish an existing building. And so the policy, as you read this, Weewell, we would prefer, because of the number of violations, that the main building be maintained and ADUs be used here instead of in townhouses.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Betabrazza, do you have a question?
Well, it says here that it's a one-family residential district, and I just want to get confirmation that that is true, that it is on a one-family residential district.
In the refusal letter, we are cited as a 2F6000 residential sub-district.
Right, that's what I thought that was in your refusal, but on the zoning viewer, it actually has it as a one-family, so I just wanted clarification.
Yeah.
Do you know?
I'm going by what the refusal letter says, but that's what we've always gone by.
Yeah.
Though, Ms. Betabrazza.
Yes.
Matapan was rezoned. Automatic it was rezoned a month or two ago, so this is.
Okay, so the zoning viewer.
A smaller instance like these in Boston.
Yeah, so the zoning viewer information.
Zoning viewer information, up to date, correct. But as Attorney Small had said, you know, this was applied for under the old zoning.
Yes.
So there are two issues with our recommendation. One, we'd prefer to see the ADU policy be enacted in a situation like this. Also, because Plan Matapan and the new zoning for Matapan now in effect, we'd also like to see proposed projects adhere to the plan and the new zoning.
Yeah, so just remind me again, then, for clarification, what is this zoning sub-district?
It's R1 right now is the current zoning.
Current Matapan zoning.
Correct.
Got it, so then the zoning viewer is correct.
Yes.
But the zoning refusal is incorrect.
No, zoning viewer, well, Derek, correct me if I'm wrong. You applied before the new zoning went into effect, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
That's why you see the 2F6000 zoning.
2F, right, from the previous one.
They're like both correct at the same time, I guess.
Yes, you can say that.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that the zoning viewer is the correct, current Matapan zoning, so it's 1F. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we started this process approximately eight months to a year ago.
Yeah, so Derek, regarding if we were to assume that 2F, you know, you basically, you're, the applicant basically like just used up all of the lot area. And if we were going by the previous zoning, which allowed you more of an increase, it seems like six units is more doable than nine because the nine just takes up all the open lot area. Is there a reason for that?
No, again, Madam Chair, we were trying to maximize the 15,000 square foot lot that we have. And again, coupled with the fact that the owner of the building, the existing building who is doing this, is trying to create some living space for family members so that they can be made in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing done, let's have public testimony.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. ONS hosted a Butters meeting back in September 26, 2023, where the applicant answered questions from Butters related to whether or not this would be rentals or condos and the number of parking spaces and how that would be. Yeah, how it came in. There were concerns expressed from one resident, in particular about potential overflow of the density leading to more cars ending up on the street and competing with the existing residents for parking. I understand the applicant was in contact with the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council. With that, I'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
And I believe there are several letters, support letters in the file as well, if I'm correct.
I believe there are both support and opposition voters. Are there other questions from the board? Hearing done, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, oh, you got it, Katie, you can put it on the list and forward. Hopefully, we're announcing the same thing. My motion is for denial without prejudice. I think this just needs a little more work. I think the variances are excessive and, you know, due to the recent zoning change, it should be more in line with, you know, kind of the most up-to-date plans for Matapan, so that's my motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Betabrazza. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Betabrazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA 1581075 with the address of 21 Holbrook Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the board?
If you're in the attendees section and you're here for this address for 21 Holbrook Street, please raise your hand. Gary, I sent a request to unmute you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'd like to thank the board for taking the time this afternoon to hear me on this matter. My name is Jerry DiPiero. I'm representing Lorraine Center at 21 Holbrook. We're looking to, as you can see on the drawing, we're looking to remove a smaller dormer that's on the right-hand side of the property and add a larger dormer for her. Her use would be on the top floor, putting a bathroom. She does a lot of exercise, so she'd like to put a gym up there and some open space and a large, large closet for she, for stuff that she needs space for. I'm sorry, can't really bring anything up. I'm on my phone, my computer decided to let go this morning.
No worries. Maybe we can turn it for questions and go that way. Are there questions from the board? Okay, hearing done, let's have public testimony.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. That's Caroline Peters from the Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held in a Butters meeting for this project earlier this spring, and it also went before the Jamaica Pond Association and the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, and both groups voted to support the project. We have not received any letters of support or opposition, so at this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I need a motion to have approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Betabrazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, the board. Thank you very much.
And next, we have case BOA 1590418 with the address of 358 Chestnut Hill Avenue. I believe this is a Article 80 case.
Yes.
So with that, the applicant and/or their representative is present. Would they please explain to the board?
If you're in the attendees section and you're here to present for this project, please raise your hand.
Hi, my name is Josh Federman, proponent for 358 Chestnut Hill Ave. I believe that George Moranci, the zoning attorney for the project, should be on as a panelist. He just let me know he lost connection, so he's logging back in. If you'd like me to run through the plans, then he can, when he gets back on, we can go through the zoning summary, if that works for the board.
Sure.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dan Artigius with Embark Design, the architect for the project, address of 580 Harrison Ave. The parcel is an oddly shaped parcel between Beacon Street and Anglewood Ave along Chestnut Hill Ave in the Brayton neighborhood. The existing structure is an older commercial building, underutilized, and our proposal is to keep the existing footprint, but to reconstruct the building and put a three-story addition on the existing height of the parcel. Working with the Aberdeen Historic District in this area, it was advised to us that a new structure on this parcel, taking some of the desired guidelines from the surrounding context was more interesting than maintaining the existing facade of the building. So that's the direction we went. The building will have 30 units and 19 parking spaces to the rear. Parking will be accessed off of Chestnut Hill Ave utilizing the existing traffic pattern into the site, and then on this plot plan to the left of the plant, parking egress goes out through a shared easement onto Anglewood Ave. So we're maintaining the existing parking and vehicular traffic pattern on the site because this rear parking area is also shared by lots on Anglewood Ave with our parcel. In terms of, I think we can go to the next slide, please. Or the slide after this one, thank you. In terms of the design of the building, as I mentioned, we tried to take some cues from the context of the area tying into the Aberdeen Historic District. So at the right-hand side of the elevation, we're tying the cornice line break en masseing with our neighbor on the corner of Beacon and Chestnut Hill Ave, creating a tripartite design, a strong base, middle, and top to the building, and signifying both the commercial retail entry on the right-hand side of the parcel and the residential entry on the left-hand side, which will be signified by a vertical element more modern and inflection, providing large openings viewing the Chestnut Hill Reservoir across the street. Additionally, in terms of the massing, we looked at using angled bays in the shared driveway easement to angle views away from the building next to us and focus views on the reservoir as well. Next slide, please. Just again, the site plan and working with the BPDA, we removed parking spaces, existing parking, from the rear to enlarge our rear green space, and we're providing an accessible path from the rear of the building back to that park space on the site, including three more trees than are currently on the site, as well as an additional street tree along Chestnut Hill Ave at the front of the property. Next slide, please. In terms of the breakdown of the interior of the building, we're providing accessible access from both the front and the rear of the parcel. Chestnut Hill Ave has a significant grade change from Beacon Street up to Anglewood Ave, and the current condition isn't, while it is accessible, it isn't ideally accessible, so we're reworking the front entry, providing almost 1,500 square foot retail space off of Chestnut Hill Ave, small amenity space, a bike room, as well as a single unit to the rear, and then that accessible pathway via ramp from the rear parking into the building. Next slide, please. Just going through the upper floor plan, so mixture of studio one and two-bedroom units, evenly dispersed throughout the building. Next slide, please. At the sixth floor, we'll be pulling back to create that, to carry that strong cornice line with the building next door, providing area for a green roof included on the project. Next slide, please. And yes, again, just ending on the elevations, showing that clear base, middle, and top, and then the vertical modern inflection signifying the residential entry. I'll check if George is back on the call.
I am, Dan.
All right, thank you, George. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dan. I apologize, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci, I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, I'm not going to activate my video, that has caused my computer to freeze moments ago.
Okay.
I thanked Dan for the presentation. I will speak briefly to the zoning. Dan has basically covered a lot of the bases that I would have covered in describing. The project is a new six-story mixed-use building. The project site is 17,620 square feet, currently occupied by a three-story commercial building containing ground-floor convenience store and upper-story offices. The applicable zoning here is an NS1, which is a neighborhood shopping sub-district. As Mr. Stembridge noted, this is a BPDA Article 80 small project. It was approved by the board, BPDA Board, on February 15 of this year. What is proposed is a new building to contain 30 residential apartment units with ground-floor retail space, 19 accessory residential parking spaces, as Dan just described, that grade in the rear. Five of these apartment loan units will be IDP units, representing 17% affordability, specifically units 101 and 203 being two-bedroom units, units 302 and 401 are studio units, and unit 504, a one-bedroom unit, are the designated IDP units that have been accepted by the BPDA, the Mayor's Office of Housing. With respect to the zoning, relief is required here in the form of a conditional use permit for the single ground-floor unit. The upper-story residential units are in allowed use. The maximum floor area ratio of 1 here is exceeded with the proposed FAR of 1.62. There is a street wall continuity setback violation arising from the commercial zoning, but the setback here has been reviewed and approved both by the BPDA and by the Aberdeen Architectural Conservation District Commission, which has design review jurisdiction over this project. There's a usable open space violation, which I point out that the site is located directly across from the active and passive recreational amenities of the Chestnut Hill Reservation, the reservoir trail, and the Riley Recreation Center. With 19 off-street parking spaces, the building has not satisfied the code's current requirements with respect to off-street parking, but the site is located within a few minutes' walking distance of the Chestnut Hill Avenue in the Cleveland Circle. Stops on the MBTA's Green Line, branches B and C. And of course, both the off-street parking and the off-street loading requirements of this building have been deemed by the BPDA and City Transportation Planners through the Article 80 process to meet current parking and loading guidelines and requirements. Finally, with respect to the cited parking design violation, there's actually no proposed end-of-parking. I believe this is a leftover violation from the previous parking design. With that, I'll pause, take any questions that members may have.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Speaking of parking, we have a comment from the BTD in regards to, I would like to request a clearer parking plan to include the dimensions of each. I would like to request a thorough parking plan to improve the dimensions of each space and the width of the clerka. Is what, what they're asking for.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Uh, Madam Chair, again, this is, you know, going through BTD, um, review through the Article eighty process, but we would of course, of course, if this is approved, work with, um, uh, the BPDA and continue to work with transportation officials, uh, for, uh, dimensions on the parking spaces. Um, but as I said, the only violation attributable to parking design was for, uh, tandem space, a situation that, that no longer exists.
Any other questions, Mrs. Stenbridge?
No.
Okay, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office deferred to the judgment of this board. Uh, this went through, uh, BPDA-led community process, uh, for small project review involving one public meeting that was held August twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, it was a pretty light meeting, from my understanding. There were some concerns raised just about green space and adding more trees to the neighborhood and whatnot, as well as conversation around parking. Um, they met with the Brighton Austin Improvement Association, uh, who their president is on to comment on the stance that they took. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
We have three raised hands. Madam Chair?
Please.
Annabelle, I just.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association would like to go on record in support. We think this is a good, um, to be changing a commercial use into much-needed residential use, so we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Gary, I just unmuted you. State your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Gal. I live at N fifty, Anglewood Avenue, just down the street from this project so far. I think it's a good location for the density and I support this project.
Gary, I unmuted you. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jerry. Um, I'm currently in a butter at eighteen Sutherland. Uh, I've been in the area for three years, and I'm on this call to support the project, um, to welcome the addition of new housing in the neighborhood. Thanks.
Minor, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, Minor Forrest, representing the Carpenter Studio. On behalf of all our members that live and work in the city of Boston, I want to go on record in support.
Thank you.
I have one additional raised hand, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I just unneeded you. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jonah Paquette. I live at forty-six Orkney Road, and I support this project.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, George Moranci, I just want to correct for the record quickly. We do have a tandem parking situation. I'm the one who's looking at a different version of plans, so the architect just corrected me on that. But, uh, what I also said goes, uh, in terms of stating that we will make sure that everything gets to mention and will continue, if approved, to work with, um, BPDA and, uh, the Aberdeen Observation Commission staff, but I do want to correct that for the record.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham? Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
All right, everybody, have a good day.
Thank you, you too.